Welcome in, everybody. Just waiting for the stream to start. It does look like they are streaming it tonight. So we'll just sit back and wait. Hopefully, everybody can hear me really quick. I'm actually at home right now. And tonight, I'm actually going to be streaming part two of the Karen Reed, A Body in the Snow. If you're linked up on my Facebook page, you can register there and join the watch party. Just gonna wait and see. I don't know if it's going to be in person or not, but we'll, uh, we'll wait and see what happens. Should start here in a few, few minutes. Thank you so much for the happy birthdays. And thank you, everybody that came into the birthday stream yesterday and hung out with us after when we watched the first part of A Body in the Snow. We're going to be doing part two tonight. So we'll, uh, it is in person. All right. We're gonna see what happens tonight. I think Mike, I don't know what Mike is doing, to be honest with you. I think he's on with Diana Diazoglio. So I thought that I would stream. Cause I'm at home and I had nothing to do. Yeah, it will be interesting to see that. Thank you so much for the happy birthdays. I have ice cream right now. I was waiting for, after my long day to come home and have ice cream. I'm gonna refresh the stream here in a second. Let me refresh this and see if it started. Nothing yet. It is 7:00 PM on the East Coast. It started, interesting. Here we go. All right, everybody.
Welcome to the March 8th Select Board Meeting. Before we begin, I want to point out that this meeting is being recorded and it will be rebroadcast by Canton Community TV at a later date. Before we jump into the agenda, Mr. Conley, I believe you have a couple of announcements.
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Unfortunately, I'd ask for more of silence in memory of two folks. First of all, Leslie Feeney of Norwood, formerly of Rosendale, passed away in March 5th, 2025. Beloved wife of Francis Exfeeney, devoted mother of Senator Paul Affini and his wife Laura of Foxborough, and Kevin Feeney's wife Amanda of Hayrow, dear sister of Jill Silveriso and her husband Joseph of Whitman, Geraldine Porter of Whitman, Jeffrey Mulry of Norwood and Wendy Schmidt, her husband Michael of Gettem. Loving grandmother of Connor and Declan Feeney. Please keep Senator Feeney's family and Senator Feeney's father Francis and your thoughts and prayers. And also, we have Edward Michael Hathaway. Eddie passed away in March 7th after a courageous battle with pancreatic cancer. Pancreatic cancer. He's a loving, devoted father, husband, dedicated son, faithful brother, favorite uncle and good friend to many who we miss by all who loved him. Ed leaves behind his wife Anne Marie Burke, sons Edward Burke Hathaway, Patrick Burke Hathaway. His parents, Edward and Mildred Millie Hathaway. And Millie worked for the, for this town for over 23 years. She worked for nine years in the Board of Health Office, 11 years in the Selectmen's Office and a little over two years in Emergency Management Clerk. She is, he is, Eddie is profound by his sons, family, friends, dog, Coda, and all those who live in, who lives, he lives, seen rich. But he's no longer with us. His spirit will live on. He worked for the EPA for many, many years. And they had a lot of, when I went to the week, they had a lot of awards and thing, plaques that he received. So if you'd keep Hathaway family and your thoughts and prayers, prayers. Eddie was 63 years old. And Mrs. Feeney, keep them in their thoughts and prayers. Have a moment of silence, please. May they rest in peace. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Before we begin, I also want to take this moment to congratulate the Canton High School Boys Hockey Team on their tremendous run to the Garden. Although the result was not what we all would have liked, the boys played great all season and it was a blast to follow along with their success. As we have done in the past. As we have done in the past, I would ask the town administrator to reach out to the schools to see if the boys would like to come in and be formally recognized for their achievement this season by the Select Board. Will do. All right. As we begin our agenda tonight, we start with public comment. And as I do each meeting, I will read the following statement. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. But the public comment portion of the meeting is not meant to be a question and answer format. There will be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and what town you live in. You do not need to give your address. I would ask that all members of our audience to be respectful of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone who does not wish to speak or who is unable to speak due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration. With that being said, we will start public comments at 7:04. And I will go to that side first.
That's for the, um.
I'm not, I'm not sure if they can hear you.
That's for the, um.
Yep.
That's for the TV.
First, Liza Colburn, Canton resident. I'm happy that you're joining these meetings again in person. I'm just going to share some really important voting information for people because we don't do a lot of publicity in the town about the upcoming election. On April 8th is our next Canton Town Election. And there are multiple ways that you can vote. First off, if you want to vote by mail, you must submit a new application every year. Some people don't know that. So you'll need to submit a new request for 2025. And the deadline to do that for this town election is April 1st at 5:00 PM. You can apply through the Secretary of State's online mail and ballot application system. And our Town Clerk website is also really useful. Then, early voting starts next Saturday on March 29th. You can go to Town Hall on any of these days to vote in person for early voting. On Saturday, the 29th, 9 to 5. Monday, the 31st, 8 to 5. Tuesday, April 1st, 8 to 7:00 PM for people who are commuting and want to come later. Wednesday, April 2nd, 8 to 5. Friday, April 4th, 8 to 1. And of course, you can vote on Election Day in person at your polling place. The polls are open 7 to 8:00 PM. Also, the Canton Voter Guide website is really useful and has links to register to vote, to request to vote by mail and to find your polling location. The cantonvoterguide.com also has links to watch the recent candidate forums, including the Select Board forum. I know you talked about approving the hours, but I just wanted to reiterate the voting details. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colburn. I wonder if you'd share that with Mr. Duty since I just asked him, did you write all that down?
I'll do it again later, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Tap it again just to make sure.
That's just for the, um, that's for the TV.
So you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can. Okay. Brenda Sweeney, Canton resident. My humble opinion, I'm feeling philosophical today. Just some food for thought to simmer in your minds. Denial, denial is not a river in Egypt. Denial is a sanctuary. Your mind seeks out to keep you safe so you don't have to face reality. There's a ton of denial on all different levels. Denial because you can't believe something would even be possible. Denial because you don't want to believe something happened. Denial because that person you know would never do that. Denial because you're friends with someone for a long time and that can't change. Denial because you like the way things have always been and you'll do anything to keep it that way. Denial because it makes someone else happy. Denial because it gives you power. Denial because it gets you a seat at the table. Denial because your family is more important than everyone else's. Denial because you're scared. Denial because it's easier. Denial because otherwise you look bad. Denial because you're now forced to choose one outcome over another. So you choose what works for you. Denial because it's been so long you can't change your story now. Maybe you're only denying one little thing, no biggie, right? Lots of reasons for denial, we all know. Everyone listening knows their own ability to choose denial over the truth. The truth can be painful. The truth can be damaging. The truth will change your reality and on and on and on. Some people choose to ignore what they know, deny what happened, look the other way, to hide in the shadows and let someone else suffer. They say the truth will set you free, but denial, denial has consequences. Denial is a beast that's always hungry. It gnaws away at your soul and it's a weight you carry everywhere. Denial may get you through the day, but the truth makes it easier to sleep at night. Denial and the truth are joined at the hip by something called karma. You may think you're safe in that space called denial, but don't be fooled. Karma doesn't need to look you up. She knows you. She has your number. She knows where you live. When you tell the truth, you don't have to look over your shoulder every day waiting to see if this will be the day karma comes knocking. Some people have no conscience. They can deny till the cows come home and never break a sweat. The real question is, are you that person? Or do those thoughts keep creeping back into your mind? Are you looking over your shoulder? Are you starting to limp from all that extra weight? Or are you walking around proud and tall with nothing to hide because the truth is on your side? Denial is like a house of cards. Sooner or later, it will collapse. It's always better to be in the clear when that happens. That's it, just a little food for thought. Thank you.
Jennifer O'Donnell, I actually didn't want to stand up here or speak. But I don't understand how we're not asking the question like Helena Rafferty walked the O'Keefes into the courtroom. She's been hiding in the police station for almost a year. And her one outing from the police station was to walk the O'Keefes in. And this has nothing to do with the O'Keefes. It has to do with a public perception. And everyone's narrative is that we who support Karen Reed are swaying the public perception and tainting the jury pool. The chief of police from the town of Canton, if you're not going to stand up and be the chief of police and address the public when they're asking you for something, you showing up at court sends a strong message. And that sure as hell taints a jury pool. My only other comment that I wanted to ask is how are we not addressing that Chris Albert is recording citizens and is once again back in the spotlight? He seems to very, be very involved in this case, yet he still gets to sit on the board. He's a public figure who is using our resources to bring citizens to court to flex his abuse of the town resources. He is far from a sensitive witness who he is in such a public role. If you are having such a strong time and a hard time at home, you need to pull back. You need to not be representing our town because it's hurting our town. It's causing a circus to come to our town. Citizens did not know that they were being recorded both with audio and visual.
Please be, please be quiet.
My moment. I don't know what the legal law is, but I do think that if it's being used in the public court form to prosecute witnesses for witness intimidation or people for going after him because he's so protected as a witness in this fucking case. Get off the board. You're part of the case. Pick one side. You can't do both. And we can't all sit here and support him doing both. It's one or the other. He's protected as a witness in this case in using our resources at his will. Or he's a Select Board member using his resources for the town. Which is it? But he can't do both. So I don't understand why no one came up to the microphone to ask that. And I don't know if I have time and I don't care if I have time because that's, I just didn't understand why no one would ask those questions.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Rita Lombardi. Canton will hold its annual town election on Tuesday, April 8th. There are two candidates for Select Board. Since 1989, John Conley has been a member of the Select Board. After 35 years on the Select Board, he is seeking reelection for another three-year term. Dr. Susan Harrington, a successful veterinarian who owned and operated a business in Randolph for 27 years, is also running for a Select Board seat. While she sold her business, she continues to work there. Susan Harrington has been a Canton resident for over 30 years. She has been an invaluable volunteer in our Canton schools. As a successful business owner, doctor, wife and mother of three grown adult children who attended the Canton Public Schools, she designed and sewed costumes for their school, for the school productions for over 20 years and continues to do so long after her children graduated. Susan's commitment to our community has been immeasurable. Throughout her career and volunteer work, she has earned the trust and respect from so many students. She is a role model to our community and one that many would be wise to emulate. At the forum last week, we heard from both Susan and John. John shared that he was proud to stand on his record, that actions speak louder than words, that family comes first. He also shared that the police oversight is the responsibility of the town administrator, not the Select Board, which is rather curious. Effective leaders take responsibility not only for successes but for failures. During John's tenure on the Select Board, there were serious incidents in this town that he would have been aware of. In 1994, Chris Albert was involved in a fatal hit and run. From all accounts, the charges and convictions have the classifications of a felon. In 2007, Canton settled a civil rights lawsuit against the Canton Police Department and Michael Lang after Chris Albert activated his direct hotline to Officer Lang, leading to an altercation with local business owners. This altercation resulted in the town of Canton being sued for civil rights violations from Officer Mike Lang in the town and they settled out of court for $300,000. The confidential settlement stated that Officer Lang would never be promoted. Yet throughout the years, the Select Board supported his many promotions, including the recent one to lieutenant. In 2022, Chris Albert decided to ride, run for Select Board. Despite the citizens' concerns raised about his candidacy, some stemming from 1994 hit and run in the 2007 settlement and some from financial mismanagement, John Conley supported his election, his candidacy to the Select Board. Actions do speak louder than words. We heard you, John. You have lifelong relationships with many in this town. But that has caused a bias. And it, I understand that working with people, for a long time, I work, we all work and the people that we work with become our family.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardi.
I just wanted to say that the people in Canton.
So. So please state your name.
Oh, Gilda McGonigal.
Thank you.
Ten Partridge Way, Canton. So it was more than just John Conley that supported Chris Albert. It was the Canton voters who voted for him and elected him. I wanted to say thank you to John Conley because since he presided over the town for 35 years, he is also seen to it that we have the lowest property tax rate of any contiguous town, lower than Milton, lower than Norwood, lower than Stoughton, Randolph, Westwood, Norwood. I might have said that twice, sorry. He's worked to, so that Canton has a AAA bond rating, which is in the top 1% of all the US cities and towns. This allows us to borrow at a very low rate. So it helps us when we're building things like a New Galvin Middle School. John has helped and overseen the beautification and redevelopment of Canton Reservoir. He's expanded and redeveloped the Galvin Middle School. He's developed the Irish Cultural Center. He's seen to the conversion of the Knights of Columbus to the Canton Senior Center. He's overseen the development of a new Canton High School. He's overseen the conversion of Elliott School to the state of the heart, state of the art Canton Police Department. He has overseen the renovation of Canton Town Hall, the renovated Canton Fire Department Headquarters, the renovation of the Canton DPW, the development of the Butch Pasquera Administration Building, the creation of a senior tax rebate program, the development of Paul Revere Park and construction of Paul Revere Village Residences and the development of new Canton Library. Not to mention the restructure and rebuilding of our treasured skating rink. Thank you.
You've got one minute, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, I just want to state your name and. Nicholas Corkery, Canton Mass. I want to make two statements.
Oh, no, this guy again. Oh, no, this guy.
Dissatisfied with the performance of Mr. Albert. Recall him. Stop heckling him. Do something about it, whatever it is. Next time he's up for an election, don't vote for him, whatever. But this is consistently the same old, same old, same old every week. So unless they're going to do something about it, I don't know what to tell them. In regards to Michael Lang, who happens to be one of my best friends, he is a good police officer. He's been promoted for doing good things for Canton. If you look up his racket over and above what's been alluded to, he's done quite a bit for Canton. We're grateful for him.
All right. That concludes our public comment period, 7:19. We will move on to the agenda. Mr. Albert.
All right. First up, public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Canton Select Board will hold a public meeting beginning on or after approximately 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. The agenda posted at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting will specify physical location or instructions to join the meeting remotely via Zoom. The purpose of this hearing is to amend the fee schedule for water and sewer service requests. Chris M. Albert, Clerk, Canton Select Board. I move to open the public meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Five, zero. All right.
Roll call.
No, no roll call.
All right, all right. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's all right. We go in person and now we have technical difficulties?
The guy's not here, so they leave it up to me. I'm not technical. You were supposed to just feel it, push the button. That's all, that's all it says to do.
All right, Mr. Trotter, from the hip.
Thank you. As we talked about a few weeks ago, we would like to up, excuse me, I'm not feeling very well. We would like to amend the fee schedule of the water sewer regulations. And this was to, as we talked about before, we wanted to. The meters that we supply. The meters that we supply were at cost. The fees haven't been updated since 2016. And the fees that are on the book right now reflect that the cost of meters in the service in 2016. We would like to update that to be what the town is paying for the meters are what, which is be listed are at the current cost. So that would be updating the meters from $115 to $167 for the small meters that we supply. The other thing is the labor cost again hasn't been upgraded since 2016. We're just trying to reflect that what the labor cost is right now. So that's, the changes are in red. So what we're asking is if you would approve these changes to the service fees or the scheduled fees. This has nothing to do with rates. It's if you use the service, this is what it's going to cost you to use the service.
So this isn't requiring all residents have to get a new meter? This is just, if you end up needing a new meter, this is the cost?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Trotter?
Just one. Mike, what is the life expectancy of a regular household meter?
The meter itself should last 20 years. It's the battery that needs to be replaced.
Be replaced in the unit.
Yes. And. And for residential, the town will accept that cost and will go out and replace that battery as needed. As we talked about at the last meeting, for the larger meters, those meters over inch and a half, that, those meters are owned by the property owner or the customer. So if those meters need to be replaced, the, those owners would have to pay the price of that meter or they would have to buy that meter. And as we discussed at the other meeting, we would, we also would propose a program where the town would help the homeowner or the property owner by supplying that meter or supplying the reading head of that meter. And we would put that cost on your bill.
So, Mr. Trotter, if I understand this correctly, the residential meters have a 20-year life, but on the commercial ones for the larger, it seems that that battery piece has a 10-year life and it's pretty close to that 10 years. So these are going to start failing.
The batteries, whether it's the large meter or the residential meter, are all about a 10-year life.
Okay.
The housing itself that holds the battery. The housing itself that holds the battery, that's where you are, that's where the 20-year expectancy comes in.
Okay.
And just one follow-up, if I may. So just to get the residents understanding this, that if their meter stops functioning, the town would be the one to notify them, because you would know that it's not reading.
Yes.
So that would be, it would be an automatic, we have to come in and change your battery or what have you.
Yes.
And I understand the fee cost of the one-inch above. Now, because I was getting confused, lost weight over the cost, the 90, what it costs, that is the actual cost of the meter.
Yes.
And then the $50 to install it on regular time, which made sense. So all that made, came, made sense to me. So I was just concerned about the residents worried about their batteries running out, when they'll get a note from the Water Department if there's a problem with their meter.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any member of the public wish to ask any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Albert?
I move that the board close this public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero.
Unless you can find the map.
All right. Next, I move that the board amend the fee schedule for water and sewer service requests as presented by the Superintendent of Public Works as referenced on Appendix A fee schedule.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and if I could just do a friendly amendment, that we will put the, the new water rate up on our website, just so people see that as well. Can we do that?
Yes, we have to, we'll go in and change the, the water rules and regulations are on the website.
Okay, so this will just be updating it.
So now that you voted it, we'll go down and we'll change Appendix A and reflect the changes.
New changes.
So that'll get done tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero.
Effective immediately, Mr. Trotta?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just asked if there were any other questions.
You shut me off.
All right. Next, Mr. Albert.
So next is the water and sewer reading routes and account numbers. Mr. Trotta's gonna, you're here for that, right, Mike?
Yes. The water sewer, MIS, and GIS divisions have updated the water meter reading routes. The work was done in order to make reading more efficient, produce a more consistent reading cycle, and help with us as we go to outsource billing and eventually get to automatic reading. Now, this work reduced the number of books from 10 to 5. This change, the change in the meter routes now changes the direction that the bills are being read. So this change will start in April for the first, for the April, May, June read. This will affect just about everybody's bill. Some bills, some customer accounts are going to have a shorter reading period, some customer accounts are going to have a longer read, reading period. When we first, why we did this was, we would be reading, parts of the book would be up in the north section, then parts of the book would be down in the south section, then parts of another book would be down around Cedar Crest in the same book. They'd have to ride up to York Street to get those reads, and it was taking, was inefficient. So we used GIS to come up with, essentially used ways to come up with a better route to ride through the town, and we did, they did a lot of work on optimizing the reads. So now we, I don't know if we have the map.
Where would it be?
It was, if you go on the, go on the first page, as soon as you go in there.
Is there water?
No, no.
Which department?
The first page of the website.
Oh, homepage?
Yeah, homepage. If you go down...
There it is. There we go. By my house.
So if you look at the map, Route 1 is the northern section of town. It's basically ordered by Elm, Green Lodge, Acuna Street, and Washington Street. That's about 1,150 accounts. The average read for that is 67 days. The max in that section is 85 to 86 days. So if you are in that section of town, this should be little or no effect on your bill. Route 2, and that's down towards the southeast corner, that's basically 1, Turnpike Street, 138, and Dan Road. Again, that average read on that route is 67 days, a max of 95 days. So a normal cycle would be 95 days. So that, again, if you're on that section of town, you should see little or no effect on your bill. So if you move down to Route 3, which is Sherman, Washington, Bolivar, Pine, and that end of Pleasant Street, that goes up towards Stoughton, the average read on that section is 99 days. Now, that average means from the last time your meter was read to the next time your meter is read in that section would be around 99 days. The max is about 114, and that probably means a $10 to $50 impact on your bill. So Route 4 now is back to the southwest corner. That's basically Sherman, Chapman, the Ponce, Walpole. That impact is about 117 days. So again, that's, again, that's from the last time your bill, your meter was read to the next time your meter is going to be read, and that's going to, you're going to see a 50 to a $70 increase or impact on your bill. Then we get to the fifth route, which is a good piece of the town. It's about 1,540 accounts. That's Dedham, Cedar Crest area, Pleasant, and Sherman. The Pleasant is the end, excuse me.
Washington Street ends.
From Washington to basically Bolivar. So that section in the streets off of that, that's in the fifth route. That is about 180, 118 days. The max in that section, which is First Parish and right by the high school, that's going to be 140 days. So you're going to see an impact on your bill from $70 to $125 increase.
All right. So if I could just summarize this for folks at home. In order to be more efficient with our water meter reading, we are changing the route map and the frequency, sorry, not the frequency, but the, the, the cycle that the meter readers are on in order to be more efficient. As a result, this one time...
Exactly.
Some residents, it sounds like a significant amount of residents, will see an increase on their water bill one time. It's not a fee increase, it's not a surcharge or anything. It's, you're paying for the exact amount of water that you're using, but the meter reading might have occurred on a different timetable. So if it's every 95 days and they adjust this route, they may do a water meter reading in 65 days, so that'll be a smaller one. But then it could be 120 days, so it'll be a little bit bigger, but it's that one-time fee, and that will help the Water Department read these meters much more efficiently going forward. Sound about right?
Yes.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Trotta?
Rocko.
If you could just come up to the microphone, please. State, just state your name.
Rocko Camerano?
Yep.
What's the purpose of the fee if it's more efficient?
So it's not a fee. It's not a fee. It's, you're being charged for the exact amount of water that you're using, but because they're reading the meters off-cycle, it just would be a variable that one time. So if they read it every 95 days and your water bill is 100 and something dollars, and they now update this new route, they might read your meter just this one time, 60 days, just because you're now on a new route. And then the future readings will be 95 days. So you'd say it's not a fee. Apologize if that wasn't clear. Yep, Mr. Merini, just state your name, please.
John Merini Jr. I got a question. How does this affect you if you have two meters in your house, one for irrigation and one for the standard sewer and water?
It'll be...
Sorry, everybody, that issue is not me. We're going to see if the feed comes back. I'll refresh it. Looks like they're having a audio and video issue. Let me refresh here. Yeah. It might be.
Three or four months a year change, though. Is that, is that a necessity?
Oh, it's not being changed.
The meter's not being...
The meter's not being changed, just the frequency, sorry.
Readings.
The route that they take to read...
Okay.
The meters in your neighborhood and surround your neighborhood.
Not the meter itself.
Not the meter itself.
Okay.
So you're just going to recalibrate...
So just state your name, please.
You're just going to recalibrate every one time, and then it will just always be quarterly after that?
Yes.
It will be consistent.
Yep.
Yes. But one caveat of that is...
Come on, Mike, I just...
Oh, come on.
I went to bat for you here.
I understand that. I just want you to understand that the next cycle will start in July, and that's when the new rate will be in effect.
Yes.
So the bill won't be the same, but it will, the usage will be the same, but it'll be a new rate.
Yep. And if people have questions, not that I want to throw this on the Water Department, but they, if they have questions about their bills, they can always call the Water Department.
The map, it will be, is on the, is on the website right now. And also, if you look, it says, there's an Excel spreadsheet. So you can go on the Excel spreadsheet, look up your address, and it will tell you what that read time will be. So you should be able to click on your address, just like that, and you go to the last column, and if you see a number, I can't read that, but if it's, that column says 66, that means it's 66 days from the last time your meter is read to the next time your meter is read. And if it's 66, it probably means you're going to get a smaller bill than you're usually getting. When you get down to those later routes, that, you're going to see some of those bills is 114 days. I think the max is 140 days, and I think that is First Parish and Williams. So that impact will be, that's where you're going to get the 70 to $125 more on your bill.
Okay. Do we need to, we don't even need to take a...
No.
That's just you informing us and us informing the public?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions before we let Mr. Trotta go home and rest?
I just wanted to mention something else that's very important, that sort of homeowners know that the quickest way to get a higher water bill, listen to your toilet. If you hear it gurgling, that means you, there's something going on, and the water bill can go up like that. So after you flush, and I'm being serious, you got to listen to make sure it's, you know, the float, the float comes up after you take off the cover, comes off and it stops. So if it's gurgling, you got to make sure that it comes all the way up, and you might have to get a plumber, but that bill will go sky high, correct, Mr. Trotta?
Yes, sir.
We have it all, it happens all the time. People say, I don't know, but my bill's huge. And it's a homeowner's responsibility, just, I just want to make sure, just listen. You know, if you have three bathrooms, just listen once in a while and say, if you hear, like, as I said, a gurgling noise, there's a problem.
If there's any question...
Yeah, exactly.
Call the office, call Mike Jerry, you're at the water office, and we're more than happy to send a technician out to your house and check and help you out.
Before the bill gets, because we, the town won't find out, to you, Mr. Chairman, and correct me if I'm wrong, the town will not find out till the bill comes in, after it's read from the previous time. The bill, you say, oh my goodness. And we get notified that so-and-so's bill is high. They have no idea that the train's coming down the track.
We're doing this so that we can move towards an automatic, automated read, so that we will be able to tell you when there is a leak. We'll be able to tell the homeowner there's something wrong, because we'll be able to see it back here in the office. We won't have to send somebody out on the road and read, and it, much like electric and the telephone, we're going to, it's time for us to get more modern. But this is the first step. If we don't do this, then we really can't do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta.
All right. Next, Mr. Albert.
Okay, next up is a public hearing to declare the detention basin at 0R Pleasant Street a nuisance. This is a notice to Beaver Metals Development LLC of a hearing on violation. Please take notice that pursuant to the notices posted at the property on February 24, 2025, and published in the Patriot Ledger on February 26, 27, and 28 of 2025, the Town of Canton Select Board issued a notice of violation and order to correct the property with the record address of 0R Pleasant Street, Canton, Massachusetts, for failure to conform with subdivision approval governing the property. Specifically, the approved subdivision plan requires that an eight-foot-high fence be constructed around the detention basin located at the property to restrict access to such detention basin. See Plan filed with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds at Book 634, Page 88. Failure to construct such fences has resulted in a safety hazard to the public and was ordered to be corrected within 10 days. More than 10 days has passed since the issuance of such order to correct, and no action has been taken pursuant to the order to correct. Therefore, pursuant to General Law Chapter 139, Subsection 1, the Town of Canton Select Board will hold a hearing on March 18, 2025, on or after 7:00 PM at the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, to determine if the detention basin on said property shall be deemed a nuisance. If deemed a nuisance, the town may enter the property to make such property safe. All costs incurred by the town to make the property safe shall constitute a debt to the Town of Canton. I move that the board open this public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to open the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. All right. Mr. Duty, do you just want to give any background on this?
Sure.
Quick summary?
Yep. This is a detention basin that was part of the development of a neighborhood Herman-Paul Road off of Pleasant Street. There, the contractor or the developer unfortunately passed away, was unable to finish the project, and the detention basin is open, and there's no, there's no safety fence around it. So it is a safety hazard for the neighborhood, for people in the area. We attempted to contact the owners of the property. We've posted the property in accordance with the law. We haven't had any response. So at this point, I think it's prudent for the town to make that area safe, and that any costs incurred, making that area safe, i.e. the installation of the fence, will be sent to the property owner. If no response, then it'll lean against the property, and when it's sold, the town will recoup its costs.
All right. Any questions for our town administrator?
How many properties are on that subdivision?
I believe there's seven homes.
Seven. And that's not been accepted? That street hasn't been accepted yet either, right?
Has not.
And is there any retainage on the planning board? Is there any funds?
There is not.
There's nothing. So, all right.
All right. Any questions from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Albert?
I move that the board close this public hearing.
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor to close the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Next, Mr. Albert.
Okay, next, I move that the board... Okay, next, I move that the board determine that the detention basin on the property with the record address of OR 0R Pleasant Street, Canton, shall be deemed a nuisance, and the town may enter the property and make such property safe.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
All right, next up, I move that the board support the FY 2026 municipal operating and fixed cost budgets as recommended by the town administrator and the finance director.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Duty had emailed his recommendations and the finance director recommendations to the board. And the, what's that?
The assistant town administrator as well.
And the assistant town administrator, I apologize. And obviously, we had several valid requests from each of our department heads, but we only have so much money to give out each year, and so we had to make some tough decisions, and by we, I mean them. And they sent the recommendations to us. So does anybody have any questions, concerns?
Still has to be, Mr. Chairman, still has to be approved by town meeting, correct?
By town meeting, yep. And will this go through finance committee again?
Yes.
Our recommendations. All right, if there are no questions, entertain a motion to approve the changes.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the operating and fixed cost budgets as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
All right, next, I move that the board accept the municipal vulnerability preparedness program grant in the amount of $100,000 to complete the MVP Planning 2.0 process.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and this was done by our town planner, our former town planner.
Correct, in conjunction with the Climate Action Plan Committee.
All right, any questions on this? All those in favor?
I was going to say comment. So is this the one that Tom and, yeah?
Yep.
Well, congratulations.
Tom Lomigam and Jennifer Wexler, yep.
They did a great job.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, I move that the board accept the accept the acceptance of asset management planning grant in the amount of $97,509 through the Clean Water Trust.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Who is, who is this one, Mr. Duty?
This is Mr. Trotta's.
Mr. Trotta's. Okay.
Can, wait, Chair, is that, so Mr. Trotta?
That's the last question.
It's not, I wanted to know. So who got the grant going? Who got that $97,000?
Mr. Trotta.
So he did do it? Oh, thank him. He left tomorrow.
Well, you just did.
Don't be fresh, all right?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, I move that the board appoint a member of the Cultural Council, Kristin Hanover.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. There was openings on this. And thank you, Ms. Hanover, for stepping up. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, I move that the board appoint the following election workers, Paul Campbell, John Demoy, Joanne Stadleman, Barbara Walsh, Ann Weddleton, and John Foley.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you, folks, for stepping up.
Next, I move that the board appoint the seasonal parks work staff, Nicholas Roggerio.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, I move that the board appoint the interim director of central maintenance, Steven.
Shwania.
Shwania.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have it reviewed in 30 days. It depends, Mr. Lynch is out. I restarted working, having a report to the town administrator, and he continues to operate his vehicle that was assigned to him, town vehicle. Is that correct?
That's fine with me.
So friendly amendment to this, that we appoint to the interim director position with the stipulation that we review this after 30 days, and he reports to Mr. Duty on a regular basis and continues to drive his current vehicle. All right. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay, next up, I move that the board approve the application to obtain a special license to serve wine and malt beverages at a one-day event for Friends of the Canton Public Library Trivia Night fundraiser on May 31st, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, contingent upon police, fire, and building approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay, next, I move that the board accept in accepting and authorizing the use of the gift in accordance with the terms thereof under Mass. General Law 44, subsection 53A, the following donations for the Canton Cleanup Day. TBC Management, $250. The Bank of Canton, $1,000. Draper Properties, $250. Cabbie, $500. Hebrew Senior Life, $2,000. Roses Cleaning, $250. And Allen Rapidport, $100.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. And thank you to all of those companies and individuals that donated.
Next, I move that the board accept and authorize the use of the gift in accordance with the terms of thereof under Mass. General Law 44, subsection 53A, the following donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services. $100 from Bob and Carol Witt. $700 from Brenda Bavani.
$750 on that.
$750, $750.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you very much for your donation to the Department of Elder and Human Services.
Next, I move that the board accept and authorize the use of a gift in accordance with terms thereof under Mass. General Law 44, subsection 53A, the grant amount of $12,500 from Out's Front Media for the 120 Cedar Street locations.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the Surge DPW Service Award for line painting.
Second.
From 3120, sorry, 312025 to 226, 2026.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and this is an annual approval. We normally do the Surge Awards once a year, but this one had some issues, so that's why it's kind of coming offline, off schedule. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the Water and Sewer Commitment Final Bills in the amount of $1,622.88.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, I move that the board consider the approval of Water and Sewer Commitment Residential in the amount of $3,524,043.47.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Next, the vendor warrant total for the week of February 6th, I mean, January, February, March 6th, 2025, The payroll warrant for the week of March 6th, 2025, The vendor warrant for the total week of March 13th, 2025, The payroll warrant total for the week of March 13th, 2025,
All right, next, Mr. Albert.
Next, I move that the board approve the rules for the dog park.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. And as we discussed at the last meeting, these rules were presented to the board, but as we typically do, we take these under advisement and vote them the next week. So did anybody have any comments, questions, concerns before we approve this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay, next, I move that the board approve the select board meeting minutes of March 4th, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Town administrator update. Mr. Duty?
Just a few items. Let me start with the election schedule.
That's a great idea.
Consider early voting for the annual town election during the following times. Saturday, March 29th, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Monday, March 31st, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Tuesday, April 1st, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, a couple of extra hours. Wednesday, April 2nd, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Thursday, April 3rd, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Friday, April 4th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Next, I just wanted, I was asked by the Director of Elder and Human Services to let folks know that there is a Canton Community Blood Drive that's going to be hosted by the Knights of Columbus. It is Saturday, April 5th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Canton Senior Center, which is at 500 Pleasant Street. And if, for an appointment, you can visit www redcrossblood.org to make an appointment. And if you enter the sponsor code CANTONKFC, you can make an appointment to give blood. And I'm sure if you just show up, they'll take your blood as well. Last, just an update for the board. So at your direction, you asked me to put together annual performance appraisal tool to be used on department heads. And so just to update you, we've, we put together a working group, myself, the assistant town administrator, HR director, building commissioner, the health agent. And we have started to collect tools that other communities are using for performance appraisal. So I think we've got a good collection, and we're in the process of kind of going through those and trying to take the best from each of those communities and incorporate that into our own tool. I don't think it's a very complicated process, so I'm hoping to have some type of draft for you by the end of April that, you know, you could take a look at and vote to adopt.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Duty.
Any questions for Mr. Duty on his updates? All right. Any announcements from any member of the board?
Chair, if I may.
Please.
Yeah. Talked with Charlie the other day, had a question for him, and he said, why don't you just say during announcements? So people often ask me, how does a member leave the board? And there are three ways a member may leave the board. Resignation, voted out, or recalled. Other members literally cannot do anything else to remove another board member. So I just wanted to make that clear because I often get asked that question.
All right, or death. Right?
Yes. There's four ways.
All right, please.
It's nice.
All right, Mr. Albert?
All right, next, the Select Board will hold its next meeting on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, 7:00 PM in the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street.
Okay, nothing else?
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I want to have something.